Good evening and welcome. Today is June 9th, 2025, and I call the legislative session of the Salisbury City Council to order. In the event of an emergency, please remain calm and exit through the double doors you came in, make a right, and proceed to the stairwell. If the hallway is blocked, then exit to the left, around, exit to the left around the corner and down the stairs. Please do not use the elevator and let us know if you need any assistance. At this time, we ask that everyone please silence your cellphones, and we will ask Councilwoman Gregory to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. At this time, we ask Pastor Keith Conkle from Canvas Church up to the podium for our city invocation.
Thank you for this invite. I know many of you know Pastor Richard Pope, and he says hello as well, so thank you. So, can we pray? Dear heavenly Father, we come before you with grateful hearts and the opportunity that we can gather in service to our city, community, and to one another. We thank you for the gift of leadership and the call to steward this well-being for our city and its people with wisdom, humility, and compassion. Lord, we ask your guidance on every discussion and heavy decisions that are made here today. Grant our leaders clarity of thought, courage to act justly, and the grace to listen well and understand of all concerns that are brought here tonight. Father, bless the city of Salisbury, its families, its workers, its students, and all who call Salisbury home. May peace dwell in our neighborhoods, may opportunity grow in our streets, and may unity prevail even in our differences. Strengthen us to serve not for personal gain but for the common good, seeking always to reflect your love and your light. Lord, we also ask for your blessings upon those who serve this city, our hard-working business owners, first responders, healthcare workers at Title Health and elsewhere. May their sacrifice be honored and their efforts bring safety, healing, and success to all of our community. We ask all this, Lord, in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Conkle, and we appreciate the impact that Canvas Church has on our community. At this time, we will ask our city clerk, Ms. English, to review tonight's legislative agenda.
Good evening, council. We have a consent agenda with a bunch of meeting minutes on it. We have five resolutions, and then we have nine ordinances, eight of which are second readings, and one that is first reading, and then we'll have our public comment and adjournment.
Thank you, Ms. English. I will entertain a motion to approve the legislative agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions, changes? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. English?
On the consent agenda this evening, we have meeting minutes for approval. We have December the 9th, 2024 legislative session. December the 16th, 2024, we have special meeting minutes and work session minutes. We have January the 13th, 2025 work session and legislative session minutes. January the 27th, 2025, special meeting minutes, work session and legislative session minutes. And then finally, May the 12th, 2025 legislative session. And I do want to point out that we have taken into consideration and we're doing what the public had asked with trying to do the recent ones and then the older ones too, and hopefully we'll meet in the middle.
Thank you, Ms. English, and thank you, Hannah. All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 3401.
Second.
Ms. English?
So, Resolution Number 3401 was not correct in the packet, so I am going to read it as it should be. Resolution Number 3401 is to appoint Peyton Hudson to the Youth Development Advisory Committee for term ending June 2027.
Thank you, Ms. English. Any questions or discussion from the council? Hearing none, all those in favor of Resolution Number 3401 as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 3402.
So moved.
3402 is an appointment to the Human Rights Advisory Committee for Kelly Martinez, term ending June 2027.
Any questions or discussion from the council? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving Resolution Number 3402, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 3403.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. English?
Resolution Number 3403 is also an appointment for Human Rights Advisory Committee for Sophia Peters, and the term ending there is June 2027.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion from the council? All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 3403, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 3404.
So moved.
Second.
Resolution Number 3404 is a reappointment of Demetria Marshall to Human Rights Advisory Committee for term ending June 2027.
Any questions or discussion from the council? All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 3404, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 3403.
So moved.
Second.
Resolution Number 3405?
Aye.
3405 is an appointment to the Truth Committee for Carrie Lee, term ending June 2059.
Any questions or discussion from the council? All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 3405, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. Moving on to our ordinances of the evening, I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2935 for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Michelle?
Good evening, everyone. Ordinance Number 2935, this is an ordinance appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government and administration of the city of Salisbury for the period of July 1, 2025, to June 30, 2026, establishing the levy for the general fund for the same fiscal period and establishing the appropriation for the water and sewer, parking authority, city marina, and stormwater funds. This is before you for second reading. My understanding is that we have three different schedules attached to this particular ordinance, that there were the council-level adjustments that were discussed during the budget work sessions, and those are reflected on Schedule A, showing the strike-through changes with the new numbers.
Yes.
I do not believe that there are any changes to Schedule B or C.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Michelle. I understand that, Mr., I understand that there will be an amendment to Schedule A, so given that, I will entertain a motion to amend Schedule A of the Budget Ordinance Number 2935 as follows. For line 72, increase city council slash city clerk from 301136 to 382367. Increase the mayor's office slash development services from 1685929 to 1717229. Decrease infrastructure and development from 1462123 to 1430823. Increase total from 59534839 to 59616070. And for line 78, increase grand total to 86896115.
That last line was for the mayor's office?
No.
For the, hold on.
The grand total, 78.
Oh, the grand total, sorry. So those two added up?
Yes.
Thank you for that correction.
That is the motion on the floor.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Kittero, do you have anything you want to add in this discussion for that motion?
Yeah, only, I think, just a little bit of detail behind those two modified adjustments. These are not items that were presented during the budget work session. There are a couple of modifications that happened post that. The first one is a change in authorized position schedule, moving from a second deputy director of infrastructure and development to an assistant city administrator position. No new costs associated with that. It is a reclassification of funding. We think administratively, that is a better alignment of project management and execution. The second deputy director position has been vacant for nearly two years, and we have a different plan moving forward that we're really comfortable with. So that was just something that did not make it into the budget work session. It was a last-minute change, but since it wasn't there, we needed to make a change here. The second impact was the consideration of a third position in the clerk's office, a position to do activities around media specialists, special projects, and additional activity that the council or the clerk's office felt was necessary. So those are the two items that are on the, for this motion, for discussion, and can be broken down in either capacity. I know more about the assistant city administrator change than the other one.
Of course. Thank you, Mr. Kittero. Mayor, any comments from you?
No. That's right, at this time.
Any questions or discussion from the council?
Yes, I'd like to have a discussion about the media specialist position.
Absolutely.
It has not been discussed in council work session, and I, it's, I don't understand why, but there's no job description that I'm aware of. I'm not sure that it's been processed through HR, and I think that's part of the vetting process that we do do, and I think there would be a much better use for that salary somewhere else in the city than for an extra person, when I feel that Julie and Hannah both are doing a stellar job already.
Absolutely.
And I, quite frankly, don't understand even the need for this.
Sure. Just to preface, Mr. Kittero, the assistant, just to make sure that we're comparing the two correctly, the both positions we're adding have not, we haven't completely gone through the HR process. They haven't been completely finalized with the descriptions holistically, neither has council seen the descriptions for the assistant city, the altered one, but, you know, positions can be added to budget before the complete vetting process has been done for the description or et cetera.
Yeah, I can add, kind of in a roundabout way. We have an internal assistant city administrator position. Tom Stevenson has been filling in that capacity in a part-time role for nearly a year, so we're pretty comfortable understanding what that role would look like. There is a slight change to responsibilities now that we're looking at actively hiring a deputy city administrator, so there is a slightly different component there. If we move forward with the assistant city administrator position, we can move forward to a city administrator deputy and assistant city administrator. With the media specialist position, special projects position, we do have mostly of a media specialist job description that exists, because we have two of those positions that currently exist within our comms team. Depending on the compensation package that exists with the media specialist and what the intended purpose is and goals, how they complement the clerk's office, that would need to be modified or increased depending on what that salary structure is. Right now, I think, right now, it is scheduled to be a little bit higher than our starting salaries for our other media specialists, things that can all be rectified if the funding is approved, but, you know, for further conversations.
Absolutely. And just to, Councilman DeShu, and we did discuss this during budget, and it was...
It was a different title. It now has come up as a different title. Same probably position, different title.
Yes.
So, to me, that's a way of getting a job in there without including the total council in discussion of this before it's presented, so.
Apologies if you feel that way. This was, and this is not to take any responsibilities off the clerk's office, and that's why we included them with the mayor's office administration in this conversation. No duties would be taken off of the clerk's office. This would be to assist council, and the administration has, the reason why they bought in is, and again, a last meeting with them, for use of the public relations and communications team, it was agreed upon that this was the avenue that the administration was willing to take and that they bought into. So again, I would love to save the taxpayers about $86,000 with possible infringement, but that's...
I have a question, and I have a problem with it. We're struggling for money now for the budget. We really are, and I don't want to put anything else on our citizens. We do not need this position. We've never had one, so why now do we need one? We're doing no more than we were doing before. I've been on here nine and three-quarters of years, and I've never remembered us having any of this, and I don't need anyone to do my media. I can do my own, and I think every last one of us can do that. I just don't see the reason why we're doing, I just, I'm not grasping these straws at all, and I've been trying to tear my brain up doing it, but I don't see the need for it. I just don't. I don't. I can't say anymore or much more than that. I just don't think there's a need for us to have a media specialist. Like I said, we've never had one. Now all of a sudden, we want a media specialist. Who are we promoting?
The city of Salisbury.
Well, because the city of Salisbury gets promoted.
Okay. Then if...
If any events are done, we have people in arts and everything else to do these, do this. So why are we doing it now? We have Jordan Ray. He does a wonderful job, so why do we need somebody to do this? I don't think we should have $85,000. Uh-uh, no. We put that $85,000 somewhere where it's much needed, and that's just how I feel, and I know you all may not agree with me, but that's my spin on it. I just don't think that we need that right now. We need to get this budget straight, then if we think about it again next year, then there's something different. But right now, no, no.
Plus, we had two interns, one of which may not have graduated because she hadn't been given enough work to do. So why weren't the interns used for something like this to pilot it?
Uh-uh. I just don't, it has nothing personal to do with anybody. It just has something personal to do with us taking money that we need for other things, and we're taking money from our citizens. And our citizens are here today, and they're saying, well, wait a minute, 85,000 more dollars? But we're crying about finishing a budget that we're a negative in.
Uh-uh. No. Uh-uh.
Yes.
Part of it is, when, a couple things, going back to the interns. It's my understanding when the clerk's office did ask council people to provide projects and stuff for the interns, only a few council people responded, so.
And you know why?
I'm just trying to speak.
Go ahead.
I'm just trying to speak. Am I...
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. That's one thing to balance. The other thing is that we don't have, we used to be able to have council announcements, meetings announced, and everything with the city's Facebook page, and this administration chooses not to do that. So the council does not have an avenue to utilize the Facebook, the advertisement, Jordan Ray, and the other comms teams to do such work. So that leaves the council out on making its own announcements about meetings, about any of the committees that we chair or liaisons to, and it really, as far as information and wanting to know more from the council, we have very limited means as using the city's access to the media publications. So the administration's office, from my understanding, is saying, well, maybe it'd be okay to have your own. So we explored that, and we had talked about it, and talked about the position, and it's a variety of terms and responsibilities, and the media challenge was one of the big ones. So that seemed to be where this was formed, so it wasn't just popped up out of the air. So I, that's just my, well, we've been talking about it since probably the end of February, so.
Yeah, just...
Did you have anything? Excuse me?
Sorry. Sorry.
I would just, I would just add that...
Hold on, I think the mayor was about to, I want to make sure he...
Yeah, just as a point of clarity, yeah, I never suggested that it would be a sufficient alternative to do a media specialist for the council, you know. What I did say, I think you guys have done some work through Jordan and through, you know, our comms department, and we certainly would be open to that, but if history is correct, I mean, if you're talking about getting your message out for meetings, if you recall, you cut the email distribution in half a number of months ago. If you're trying to get, that's your role, that's your goal, then I'd say that, you know, you're kind of, you're talking against yourself in that regard. My view is, look, if you need some help doing something, put out some messages, hey, you know, what I don't want to become is a tit-for-tat, you know, message to the administration. I'm just saying.
And this is taking now a turn towards now me, and I, this is not...
It's a turn to the facts.
Mr. Mayor, okay, and that's fine, and I, so I want to, if this is going to be, it's, then I would like to just move the conversation forward, but that's not the case. We now have a program where people, where citizens can go and have alerts to everything that we sign up for. If that's what, I mean, I didn't want this to be that sort of thing.
No, I knew it.
It was, and so in our last meeting last week, Mr. Mayor, I said, I do not, I don't want this, we have a third person, but if you look on our social medias, there hasn't been, there's been no mention of city council doing the work in the community unless it's with anything else. There's also, explain the legislation that's going on, all the things that citizens want having this person dedicated just that, that's the goal. Beyond, yes, our clerk's office is doing a phenomenal job. This is taking nothing from them and not adding anything more to their plate. This is a person dedicated to promoting the city and also assisting city council in legislation and things that, constituent services, special projects, all the things that we want to do, this person will be dedicated in. If that is an issue, by all means, we do not need to do this, but it's not to promote anything more, the council versus admin, that's not the goal. It is to promote the city in another way, another light, that is not being done now since, that I've seen. Councilman Gregory, yes?
So, in our discussion, you know, before, we talked about how communicating with the public, there have been many times where we have gone, we have sat here in a council meeting asking the administration to publicize informational things, not just when a street is closing down, but to explain things to folks publicly, to be more transparent, and that's what I see this role doing, and I think that's what the intent behind it was, is to improve communications between the government and the citizens, and that's something that has been sorely lacking for quite some time. This is somebody who could set up town halls in each of our districts and make arrangements for that so that we can answer constituents face to face. Could we do that ourselves? Possibly, but at least three of us, at least...
Okay.
At least three of us.
Hold on, Councilman Gregory, I respect the opinions, and I know that there are some questions and concerns, but I will be more, have to give you all more time and public comment if you all have some feelings, questions, and concerns, but if we could refrain from the outburst and the inappropriate remarks, that would be much appreciated. I do thank you all. My apologies, Councilman Gregory.
Thank you. We have to also realize that this is frequently a job that we have to do around our, around our full-time jobs. Several of us have full-time jobs that we have to work outside of the hours that we put into this, and that doesn't take away from the hours that we put in. We put in just as many hours as everybody else, but this is something that would take that, that strategic aspect off of us, where we are having to communicate, and it would also unify messaging, I think, on legislation, making sure that, that, you know, projects that we have got coming up, things that we're talking about doing, getting feedback, you know, the Zen City and all of these, these software programs, we're not able to get that feedback ourselves either. So being able to use that kind of programming to get feedback from our constituents so we have a finger on the pulse as well, you know, and we're not having to constantly go to the administration and ask them for information. This would help with that, help alleviate communication between constituents and the government, communication between the council and the administration, and hopefully make things run a lot smoother, okay? So I think that it would, it would kind of diffuse situations as well, and that's why I think this is a good idea, okay, is to be able to do that, to be able to facilitate communication. That's something that I have tried to do, but I cannot keep up on social media all the time, and I don't have time for that. This would be somebody who would be able to get that messaging out there, whether it's through social media, through, you know, any, any kind of ways of reaching the general public.
Any discussion from the council?
Just on this side of it, since it would be a position in the clerk's office, can you clarify the salary for me?
It would be potentially city council and/or clerk's budget, but the salary that's presented, it would match the media specialist budget, that, I knew you had a concern about that, about this salary. It would match the media specialist budget that...
That we currently have.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess my concern would be more that, you know, again, it's a decision that the council needs to make, it's going to affect the city wide, but like I said, we had two interns for two different semesters, and there's not a kid in this world that does know how to do Facebook posts and do, and that sort of thing, and they did, you know, good work. We just didn't direct them in that regard, or at least you guys didn't. I don't know how it worked, but I'm just saying, as a general statement, this is clearly work that could be done, you know, by a solid college student that could help if you guys, that's your messaging, rather than spending $74,000 a year for that work. And again, you also have the benefit of, whether you realize it or not, the benefit of the comms department.
That's all we truly want, Mayor, and I just want, I want it to be, not just said but followed through, and this is not a fight to you.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not. And like I told you on last week, I don't want to call, to spend the citizens, nor, I mean, yes, we have interns, but that is not, they're specialized in that, and that, yes, they've been doing some great work that the citizens will be seeing here very shortly. So if you, full-fledged, ask to have the use of the comms team and the media specialist, please, by all means, but we just haven't seen that in the recent, but if we're willing to rectify that and move forward with that, then yes, about me.
Yeah, nobody's ever come to me and asked me, and I've turned them down. I mean, that's what I'm saying.
All right.
I think it's about money. It's bottom line. It's 85, what was the, what was the figure? I don't, Councilman Jack, I mean...
I was just hearing 74, now I was...
81. Let's go to the middle. Let's go with 81.
The salary is 44, but then you talk about fringe and et cetera.
But where is the revenue coming to cover that when we are already looking at a tight, Councilwoman Jackson?
It's the same questions I had.
It's not, it's not a tit-for-tat as far as administration versus council. It's like, is this a needed position?
Yep.
The other piece of it is that if we, at a later date, want to fill this or discuss it in greater length, then that can always be done, but I see no reason to put it in this budget that we are wrangling with right now.
I see no reason either, if we have the full use of the comms team. I see no use. Councilor President?
For the, this is a question for the clerk's office. I know I've utilized the interns with not only social media, research, you know, projects, including Shoemaker-Pon, going back six, seven years ago, but the, also this summer we have intern, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And I know you put out a question to all the council people to provide projects for the intern. Okay, how many council people responded?
The clerk's office.
And who was that?
You missed a turn.
Okay. So, we're offered, we're constantly, the clerk's office is constantly asking us what types of things to, and I think I filled up probably the whole summer for this intern on those very, I think there was like six or seven very poignant projects and research to be done and developed and to be...
I only submitted one, sorry, Angela.
To, to fill their, you know, their term in very important work, which is work we don't have time for, but it's very good information for us to use. So, and that's if we end up getting an intern, and, but I always give, I always utilize interns, and I think that when we are offered it, then we need to use it.
Absolutely.
Well, to use it when you necessarily do, do your own work, why would you utilize an intern or utilize a media specialist when you do your own work? I, I do mine, I promote my own stuff.
I, I.
I promote my own stuff. I don't, I don't wait for anybody to do anything for me, I do my own. And I, I, I very well have a great fanfare of people who come and utilize, even when, once I had a town hall, I did that myself, and the people came. And so I don't see why, it's a, it's a big tip that we have, and you just said, we're not even using the, the, I can't even think, the, um, interns. So what makes us think we're going to use media specialists?
Can I ask a question? Do the interns get access to the Facebook page?
No.
For the city of Salisbury?
No, not for the city of Salisbury.
They had not.
They do not have access. So they don't have access to any of the city of Salisbury Facebook media, or any of the social media, correct? Okay.
Right.
Well, we do.
And to be mindful, and to be mindful again.
We don't have access to the city of Salisbury.
We might not have access to the city, but we have access to our own page.
What council has ever had access to?
We represent the district, why you not have the cities?
We didn't, okay, I want to make sure we.
I just wanted to clarify, because everybody keeps saying that, that they can post, that we can, we can have them posting on social media, they, they don't have access to the official channels of communication. I just wanted to clarify that, that's all. And again, as, I'm going to repeat again, it is, it is fantastic that you're able to do this stuff by yourself, April, that's, that's amazing, and that's great. Unfortunately, like I said, some of us have other responsibilities outside of the council.
How do you do?
And I understand that, but the fact of the matter is, is we don't have the time to sit there and go through a lot of data. A lot of the stuff that, that I know Angela has, has asked of the interns is going through data and things like that. I personally like doing it myself, that sort of thing. That's why I haven't put any requests in, because I like being able to do that myself, because it, it, it's a lot, I'm able to, to adjust and, and find exactly what I'm looking for, okay? But more intensive projects, things that Angela might be asking for, are things that the interns would be helpful with. So that's why I haven't utilized the interns. But, you know, like I said, having, having somebody who can, who can put information out about legislation, you know, things that we, we've asked previously many times of the administration to publicize things, to make sure that the public is made aware of things well in advance, so that they don't feel like things are being sprung on them, that sort of thing, I think is incredibly important, and that is not current, that is, even after many requests, has not been fulfilled by the administration.
Ms. Shaw, I just got to respond to that. That's just patently false. I mean, I have never, in the course of 16 months that I've been here, had anybody refer to anything legislatally, other than this piece of legislation we're talking about right now, that's being sprung on us. I guess what I'm trying to say to you.
I'm, I'm moving forward.
Yeah, I'm just saying, listen, you can't take, listen, you can't take those kinds of shots without, without a corresponding response. I know it's uncomfortable.
No, 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 I was talking to council vice president who wanted to respond, and I told her, no, we're going to, you have the floor, that's, that's the next item on the agenda, the 6% tax. Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Yeah, and I apologize. I'm just saying, listen, listen, nobody is, everyone wants to be fair and above board, even when we don't disagree, I know that's a foreign concept, but, you know, even when we disagree, to the extent that you guys want to put something out there, hey, well, we don't want to have a battle on Facebook as to what our present.
That's, okay.
That's all I'm saying.
So we're saying, we're saying it here, and I don't want to prolong, we've taken up enough of the, of the citizens' time. We have full use, we, council, I don't think we need to move forward with this, if, unless there's consensus. If so, I would, I appreciate you speaking up now, but I don't want to take any more time on this one particular thing, we have many more items on the agenda. Any more comments, questions, concerns?
The comment I have is, is an example of the legislation we've been asking since the presentation of the administration bringing forth the 6% for the water and sewer hike to get ahead of the curve and get educational and informational things out on the city's webpage to give them an understanding of the PFOS and the chemical expenses and the expansion, multimillion-dollar expansion of filtration materials and extra buildings, and, and that has not happened. Now, we were presented with that budget, I guess it was April the 14th or 15th we got that, and so from day one, and even if you go back and look on the session last time we met, we said this, I said the same thing, because there was a lot of people who came up last meeting in regards to the 6% and asking why and what for, and it's been going up and up and up, and I asked again if the administration would please put out some education and understanding about why the 6% is going up and explain in detail to this so we can educate our constituents. And that was two weeks ago, and that has still not transpired. So that would be an example of legislation not being put out there on the administration's part. The other example would be Carroll Street. We've asked over 18 months for updates on that, and we got sporadic information, and then the Facebook got very little information on that, but we had to, like, basically beg for, there, there are examples, but the.
Just a.
I'm speaking, just, I've just finished my sentence, Mayor. Thank you, I appreciate that. So those are just some examples. You're asking for what are some examples that we're talking about? Those are some clear examples. We would like to be able to, as the council, explain why we're supporting the administration's on, uh, presentation of the 6% water and sewer tax. So it's not like it's a dueling idea, it's a supported idea, but we want to get the information out, because we get asked a lot of questions, and then constituents come, like they did last week, and ask a lot of questions that we have been talking about in the budget hearings and the budget sessions, and understanding where this money is coming from and where we need to spend it, and there's no information put out there on the very own city's Facebook page.
So, to your point, it's a fair point. You know, the, the year prior to me becoming mayor, you guys had a 9%, preceded by an 8%, I never saw any presentation of anything other than, you said the last time, something to do with chemical costs, when I did a forensic analysis of what the, the increase was, it was paltry, and you had a 9% increase. We did a 6% and a 12% last year because, I think everyone understands, that the PFOS is a, is a quickly coming expectation of all water plants, which is not news to anybody to the extent that it's, it is news to somebody, my apologies, but to the, you know, that's a reality, and it's, it's specific. As it relates to the ultimate increase, we're trying to get a budget letter out, but we haven't adopted the budget. So that's a problem. So, you know, at the end of the day, listen, if you guys, if this is all about presentation and flow of information and transparency, I get it, I'm with you. Let's roll in the same direction on that point. But it always seems like, you know, anything's wrong with the world, eh, it's the administration's fault, eh, the administration, and that's just, it's patently incorrect, and it's just factually shy of, of reality, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Kitzro, yes.
Thank you. Understanding that the motion that's on the floor right now had two parts to it, we spent a majority of the time talking about the second part, this additional position, before this motion dies or is not voted for, it sounds like that is going that direction, I just ask for consideration to modify that motion, if there is a decision to still keep the first part moving forward. I've got numbers if that is something that's interested in this point.
Counsel, any discussion on the first portion, which is to adjust the mayor's budget moving funds from DID? Discussion? None? Okay. Am I entertaining an amended, an amended motion, or are we proceeding with the motion as presented?
Wouldn't we have to do an amended motion where we are voting on what Mr. Kitzro just presented as that piece of the amendment?
Yes, that's what I'm asking, are we, are, am I entertaining an amended motion to remove one and, and keep the other, or are we staying with the motion that was presented, which is still on the floor to, for both of the positions?
I make the motion that we amend it and we approve the first motion that was just discussed, the city administrator.
Assistant city.
Assistant city administrator, and to delete the second request in the amendment.
I will help you out with that, just for the record.
Yes, please do.
Okay. So I am hearing a motion, hearing a, an amended motion to Section A of the Budget Ordinance Number 2935 for Line 72, to increase the mayor's office slash development services from 1685929 to 1717229, to, and to decrease infrastructure and development from 1462123 to 1430823.
Oh, yes.
So that was me, I was, I was entertaining the motion.
I will, thank you, ditto, President's motion, yes.
Any question or discussion from the council? Hearing none. All those in favor of the amended, amended motion to Schedule A, please signify by saying aye.
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 Recuse.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that's two, can we actually do a roll call for that, just to make sure, for the record? Councilwoman DeShill?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman, uh, council vice president?
Recuse.
And Councilwoman Gregory?
No.
Okay. It's two ayes, one no, one recusal, and the chair votes aye. The amendment to ordinance Number 2935 has been approved. City clerk, do we have to go back to the original motion? Okay.
As amended.
We have to, as, yes.
Yes.
Okay, so going back, I understand, I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2935 as amended for second reading.
Just to clarify, he's asking for a motion in a second to approve the ordinance 2935 for the amendments read by Ms. Boucher initially, and by adding that position that you just approved the amendment for. That's what all of that would include, just so we're clear.
Thank you, city clerk.
Ask questions, Chair.
Oh, my goodness, we have to, can we?
I'm sorry, someone's reading my blank look, I apologize.
Miss, can we, thank you, we appreciate the participation. That is the entertaining, entertaining motion on the floor.
Okay. Julie Or Deshaun, President Doherty.
Yes.
In any way, shape, or form that it has to be written legally, I am in favor of the proposal from the administration regarding the assistant.
Yes, that was the motion that you just, we just, we already did that, yes. So that's the motion.
But I am, but I am not in favor of the media specialist for the city.
That is the motion that you, we already saw.
That's it, yes.
That's not a long, longer discussion, we already amended that, that was the one that helped you on, that was the Schedule A.
Thank you.
We are there, so now we are on, I need, so if we don't do this, then, I am entertaining the motion to approve ordinance Number 2935 as amended.
Got it.
Correct.
Got it. Roll call, is that what you're asking?
I am, I'm entertaining a motion for, I cannot make the motion.
So moved.
And do, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions or discussion from the council? All those in favor of the amended ordinance Number 2935, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing.
Recuse.
Okay, we have three ayes, one recusal, the chair votes aye, ordinance Number 2935 has been approved. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2936 for second reading.
So moved.
Ordinance Number 293.
Oh, I didn't hear a second.
Oh, sorry.
Second.
Thank you.
Ordinance Number 2936, this is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to amend water and sewer rates to increase rates by 6% and making said changes effective for all bills dated October 1, 2025 and thereafter, unless and until subsequently revised or changed. This is before you tonight for second reading, and there's been no changes or amendments.
Thank you, Ms. Boucher. Any questions or discussion from the council? All right, all those in favor of ordinance Number 2936, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2937 for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance Number 2937, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to set fees for FY 2026 and thereafter, unless and until subsequently revised or changed. Again, it's my understanding there's been no changes or amendments since first reading.
Thank you, Ms. Boucher. Any questions or discussion from the council? All those in favor of ordinance Number 2937, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2938 for second reading.
Ordinance Number 2938, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Maryland State Art Council for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $5,000, and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate these funds for expenses associated with strengthening collaborative efforts between the Maryland-based touring artists and the Maryland Folk Festival. No changes or amendments.
Any questions or discussion from the council?
No.
All right, hearing none, all those in favor of ordinance Number 2938, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2939 for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance Number 2939, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Title Health for the purpose of accepting sub-granted funds in the amount of $74,740 to be used for the partial salary and benefits of the Swift Community Paramedic. Before you tonight for second reading, no changes or amendments.
Any questions or discussion from the council?
No.
All those in favor of ordinance Number 2939, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2940 for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance Number 2940, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Department of Natural Resources Waterway Improvement Fund Grant for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $2,156, and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate these funds for the Salisbury Fire Department. Before you tonight for second reading, again, no changes or amendments.
Any questions or discussion from the council?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor of ordinance Number 2940, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2941 for second reading.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance Number 2941, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY 2025 general fund budget to appropriate $6,141.38 to the Salisbury Fire Department's operating budget after the city received $6,141.38 in proceeds generated from the auction sale of surplus heart monitors. Before you tonight for second reading, there's been no changes or amendments.
Any questions or discussion from the council?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor of ordinance Number 2941, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2942 for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance Number 2942, this is an ordinance of the city approving a budget amendment of the FY 2025 general fund budget to appropriate $18,984.60 to the Salisbury Fire Department's operating budget after the city received that same amount, $18,984.60, in proceeds generated from the auction sale of portable radios and accessories. Again, tonight for second reading, there have been no changes or amendments.
Any questions or discussion from the council?
No.
All those in favor of ordinance Number 2942, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2943 for first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number two nine four three, this is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury amending Title V of the Salisbury City Code entitled Business Licenses and Regulations to Add a New Chapter 5.23 to Authorize and Govern a Gas Franchise Agreement. This is before you tonight for first reading. There's been no changes or amendments since the presentation at work session.
Thank you, Ms. Boucher. Any questions or discussion from the council?
No.
All those in favor of ordinance number two nine four three, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. The chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. Boucher. That concludes the ordinance portion of this tonight's agenda. This time we will pivot to the public comments portion. All those wishing to speak during this, this moment may go to the podium. If you wouldn't mind, please say your name. And if you are a city resident, Mr. Kitzfeld will have the timer there for your convenience.
Hello, Paula Donald, city resident. Y'all need to take some lessons from the county council. They don't have a media. They know how to get on and do their jobs. They know how not to complain. Ms. Gregory, Ms. Blake, if you're all tired and you have this full-time job and everything, y'all need to resign because if you need a media and you need $80,000 of the city's Salisbury's taxpayer money, you need to go and be happy someplace else then. Mr. Doughty, I have questions about your budget. From 2023 to early of 2025, what you turned in, is that what you're wearing tonight? A J. Crew jacket that you turned in for us city taxpayers to pay for? I looked for a line item of the 300, I don't know, $2,000 for 2025. Couldn't find any line items where you're allowed to turn things in. You have Nike Pro jacket and hoodie you turned in. You turned in polo shirts. You turned in embroidery. I'm going on a three-week international cruise. I like to have some embroidery done. Should I give that to you to turn in? Mileage is kind of questionable, too. Then I took it upon myself to check your record. That's pretty, pretty sad. Pretty sad on the judiciary where you are in charge partially of a budget overseeing the city of Salisbury and you can't even pay your bills. I wasn't gonna get up here and do any of this, but after watching, and then I sat for two days in a budget session with all of you, all of you, and every which way, Ms. Gregory, something, something, Julie, we gotta take something off of you, Julie. Something, don't know what it is. Maybe a third person. I highly recommend all of you go back and watch the budget session. Highly will recommend you to go back. Ms. Julie was asked a couple questions. She said, what is the position and what's it entitled? She said, with Ms. Hannah coming in and next year at this time, she should be able to be, handle a lot more. We have interns. We have $11,000 computer upgrade system. Go back and watch it. I'm shaking right now watching every, almost every one of you up here. Ms. Jackson, you did right for bringing that up. Now I'm gonna end on a positive note. Love, love, love your hometown, or hometown hero banners. However, and I don't want to put it down because it really, really needs to have recognition. And it needs to be recognized in the downtown city plaza, Main Street, on the poles downtown, not on, I don't know, the, the street I travel by three times a day, Eastern Shore Drive. I do that three times a day and after watching the city council meeting the other day and finding out that they have been hung, I was like, I never saw them. You drive by, they're too high. They blend in with the rest of the scenery in the background. You can't see them. They deserve recognition and they deserve to be downtown, on the poles everywhere downtown. Let's see, I can go on about other things, but I pretty much hit the nail on the head here. I'm going to further inquire about all of your, what you turn in for reimbursement. Some of yours, Mr. Doughty, is very questionable.
All right. Michael Langford, I live at 1026 Arthur Court. I'll be brief. Just common sense wise, real quick sound bite for y'all. Part-time counsel does not need a full-time PR person. That's crazy work. I don't even know, I, I don't even know who gave you all that idea, but like, I appreciate the members on the council who spoke to common sense. Specifically to Councilwoman Blake, your, your example of why, before the budget's approved, again, to the mayor's point, why would, why would you put out an official press release for something that isn't official? I mean, that doesn't even make any sense. So your example is just falling flat. You couldn't, and maybe have a better example with more time, but what you're presenting to the public here doesn't make any sense. Please don't do that. I'm glad that you guys went with common sense at the end of the day and nixed that second part, that last-minute amendment. It wasn't even written for us to review. You know, the council hadn't reviewed that position. I just think that like, maybe I don't know what you all need, right? But this is not the way to go about doing it. Last minute trying to shove something into the budget. It's just like, you know, be actually transparent and have a conversation. But the public has, you guys have email. Everybody, individual and as all council members, right? Like, you have a way for your, to hear your constituents. There's plenty of people that aren't getting email responses from y'all. Some of you are better at that than others. Mr. Doughty, you have been good when I've emailed and, and responding, right? To your credit. But like, yeah. Yeah, that's really it. Part-time counsel doesn't need a full-time PR person. Thank you for the council members that spoke sense.
Thank you.
My name is Phoebe Burke. I live just outside the city limits and I'm a graduate of Parkside High School. On October 26, 2005, ordinance 1961 was passed. I don't remember it. I was exactly two weeks old, but my parents remember it. And on May 30, it hit the news again in WBOC. My parents remember it as something that got shoved through, something that they were concerned about as two unmarried people who just had a child living in the city. And it was something that a lot of people were concerned about and it's something that we're still concerned about. It was designed to prevent SU students from renting houses within city limits, which to me is questionable to begin with, but the decrease from four to two unrelated residents in a rented house is also legal discrimination on the basis of familial status. And that bothers me, too. It also bothers me that every time the Maryland Housing Report is released, the concern is always that we don't have enough affordable housing in Maryland. And I think that a lot of citizens could concur with that. But the problem is subsidized housing and affordable apartments aren't enough. Another way that people make ends meet is by rent sharing. It works for them and I think it can work for the city, too. So what I'm urging the council to do is to review ordinance 1961 and strike it as urgently as possible because right now we have people who are going to be coming in next academic year to Salisbury University. They're looking to sign leases and I don't want there to be another obstacle in the way of people making their home here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I was gonna go with handsome. I was gonna go with handsome. Oh, hush up. Good evening. My name is Lynn Bratton. I currently live at 303 South Boulevard in the city of Salisbury and have for about 50 years on two, two blocks over there. Thank you very much, Julie, for taking heed of a suggestion that I think one of the citizens put forth. I'll take ownership on that one to keep the current minutes current so that people know what happened. It's hard to remember what happened eight months ago to even see if there were mistakes. So let's keep the current ones happening and kudos to you for catching up because you just presented a boatload of them. Second thing I want to say is I heard during this whole debacle just now about the getting messages out. About a year and a half ago, when, when the new city council members came on board, I think that's about when it was, it was another suggestion of mine that at the end of every meeting, that the city council members report to the public about the meetings and about the committees that you sit on and give a report to the public through the venue of the public venue that we have here with the TV and PAC-14 announcements. Several members took heed of that suggestion and have done a very good job. I know what the airport's doing and I know a little bit about what's all the, happening in some of the community areas in the, in the parks, thanks to several people. But other than that, the reports are, have been not happening. So if the reason you thought you needed a PR person was to get those words out, you had a perfectly good forum that you could have been using all along by simply saying, I attended this meeting, this is the committee I'm assigned to, here are things that are happening with that committee, here are the things that need to be discussed within the city, and here's how it's going to affect us. And that would have been a way, a beautiful way to get it out. Also, thanks to a comment that was made earlier and, and about the cutting out the, the, almost in half the people who were getting the announcements, I was strucken from that with no notice and I was getting the information out to almost 2,000 people per announcement on Nextdoor. And if you wanted people to know what was going on, I was doing, I was doing it for free and I was just putting out facts. I wasn't throwing it on any opinions. I was just doing it. Here's when the meeting is, here's the agenda, here's some things to look at, be there, be in the room, be informed and be heard. And all of a sudden, I stopped getting them. I will apparently start getting them again with the new, with the new software. Anybody in here can sign up for it. Do it because it's the way for you to find out firsthand what the agendas are saying. Not an opinionated piece, but simply here's what it is and then show up and listen. Because the only reason I know some of this historical stuff is I don't think I've missed hardly a single meeting, even when I was going through chemotreatments. So that's the way you stay informed, folks. That's the only way you stay informed. As far as one other thing, just a safety concern, I don't, I think the police chief is, maybe not. I've noticed recently that folks in our community are using the bike lanes as right-turn lanes. They will sneak right up on you. You'll be stopped at a light, particularly down here at the hospital and particularly over on Waverly, turning in front of the ramen house. They'll sneak right up there. You're waiting for everybody to calm down, blinker on, ready to make a right-hand turn. Next thing you know, you got somebody right at your car door, right at your car door. And they're pulling out right about the same time I would be starting to make my right-hand turn on red. And somebody's gonna get a bad swipe and it's gonna be a mess because they're where they don't belong. Those are not right-turn lanes. Those are bike lanes. If we're gonna have bike lanes, then we got bike lanes. They're not right-hand turn lanes. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
I wasn't planning on discussing a lot of this because what I want to discuss will probably bore, bore you. But I had a full-time job and I taught part-time. And I would say to Ms. Gregory, I quit my part-time job because I had my responsibilities in other places. And if that's what you need to do, that's what you need to do. All of you are, and me, are completely replaceable like that. The other thing, six percent? Are you kidding me on the water and sewer? I, I've lived through, from 2015, when Jake Day went on his tour of raising rates for lawsuits. I don't care what chemical you need, whatever. It's ridiculous. Since, uh, charges for services increased by 31% for every dollar you spend on water and sewer bills since 2015. You get the same service, but now you're spending a dollar 31. That is 15% higher than the Biden inflation rate that did not go away as you were told it would. We've been paying 27% more for employee salaries since 2015. Professional and skilled services are up 47%, and I'm assuming that's administration. I got these figures from the audits from 2015 to date, today, or to 2024. Well-managed or full of pork, you decide. Other operating expenses have increased from 4.6 million in 2015 to 6.65 million in 2024, or 30%. In 2024, the other expenses line was 45% of the total line item like salaries, personnel, benefits, et cetera. Why are 45% of expenses not grouped and described in more detail? This is an audit. I was an auditor that would never pass with the accounting firms I worked for, which by the way, were international accounting firms. Since the city, since city council, by the rules of council meetings where you're not allowed to speak, we're not allowed to ask questions, and the public is only three minutes, and my dis, and my district representative did not return my phone call, I would call this censorship and once again, conunism. We need to stop the ridiculous spending in the name of we do, in the name of we need to do something to look like we're doing something. Either that or expose your true agenda. And, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Robert Taylor, Salisbury resident. I remind the last speaker, he may not know, most of the city employees have now been unionized for a year or so. You ain't seen nothing yet on salaries. But anyway, tonight, every meeting is, is a new experience for me. This budget tonight, first of all, the things that were shot, the thing that was shot down and a couple of the other matters, they weren't even in the briefing book. The only thing in the briefing book was increasing expenditures by about 933,000 on a list of items that, that was in the briefing book. There wasn't much discussion about it. There was only 910,000 in expenditure. In other words, it's not in balance. When you amend a budget, you have to keep it in balance. But the only things, Mr. Doughty, that have been snuck into the budget without much public notice have been things like this, these items. They wasn't in the briefing book. Why was that? There's no excuse for it. And there's other things you've put on the agenda at the last minute. We know what's going on and we know that this position for the city clerk's office, this media specialist or whatever, is basically to promote political agenda for certain members of the council. I mean, $85,000 to have somebody set up a Facebook page? I got a nephew who's 10 years old. He's got a Facebook page. He may be on a move here. He'd have, get a pretty good salary, I guess, if you kept this position. And, Ms. Blake, I mean, the things you mentioned about not getting information from the administration. Now, you mentioned the sewer and water increase. Didn't you all have budget work sessions? Does the council no longer do that? And didn't this come up in a budget work session when you could have asked any of the questions you wanted? So, I mean, as the other speaker said earlier, stop this nonsense that you're spouting. Good evening. Oh, I have one other thing. The four to two law, I didn't come to talk about it, but if you want to destroy our single-family neighborhoods, that's the best way to do it. Drop the four to two law. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Molly Heligoss, resident and CEO of Habitat for Humanity of Wycomico County. I am pleased to announce that we are selling two houses this month, yay, and it is National Home Ownership Month, which it's a perfect opportunity, obviously, for us to be selling houses, which is one of the, one of the things that we do. And it's right here in Salisbury. So it's, it'll be on Gray Street. We are, and then please mark your calendars for July 11. We are doing a trolley tour. We're renting the trolley and we'll be taking a tour, showing folks all the different work that we've done in the Church Street neighborhood. So it's super exciting. Something else that's, that's fabulous is that in the last 11 months, we've helped 27 families with critical home repairs. So preserving homeownership is another one of the core things that we're really proud of and we're doing so much work. And the city of Salisbury has granted us $150,000 to help families with some critical home repairs. And that's, that's really exciting. So we have, we have some families that have already applied. I wanted to mention it tonight so that if, if you're watching out there and you need a critical home repair, if you need a new roof, you need something, you know, something and you can't afford it and you are low income, please, please, call our office. We want to hear from you. And, and then something else that great happened today, Wycomico County Vice President, Council Jeff Merritt, he mentioned that our agency will be receiving some of the community reinvestment and repair fund, funds from the local management board, again, to address critical home repairs in the county and the city. These funds come from the cannabis revenue, tax revenues. And so it's, there's, there's so much great work that we're doing. I'm just not sure how many people, I don't, I need to say more often, thank you. And, and to just let, let the folks know, if you know someone in your neighborhood and it looks like they need a critical home repair, please urge them to call our office. We want to help them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Colin McEvers. I am a.
I am a, I've been living in Salisbury for the past couple of years, and I'm also a student at Salisbury University. I just wanted to quickly share my perspective, the perspective of a college student in regards to the PR matter and the additional position. I know it's been resolved already, but this is just for future reference and kind of my thoughts. So, and things like this have come up on my campus too, with the addition of positions, you know, tight budgets, things like that. I personally, I think that tasks like social media promotion, which can, you know, be done easily by interns or current employees, should never be made into paid positions in and of themselves, especially when we have these difficulties with the budget, things of that sort. I know that many members of the council are already using social media to promote different events, town halls, things like that, for their constituents to see, and I think these are the best ways of promoting such things. I'm not sure of all the members of the council who are users, but, you know, I've seen Ms. Gregory and Mr. Doughty both have TikTok pages, for instance, and they're used pretty frequently for constituent outreach. And I know others are users for platforms to do the same thing as well, for constituent outreach. So, you know, I believe the goal of doing this, it can be achieved with means that, you know, are currently available to the council, you know, things like clerks, interns, things like that. And I also know that there are a lot of members of my community, of my college, that are interested in doing work and, you know, doing stuff like this. So there's just, there's a large population of students, you know, who are interested in doing this kind of stuff, who want to gain that experience. And last thing, I do believe that Facebook, you know, I think, I think most of the people, you know, that come to these city council meetings that are interested in city matters are mostly users of Facebook, and it's the most available platform for those who keep up. So, you know, I think that it's just something that can be done by, you know, means that are already available. And that's just for future reference. I just want to share my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to use this time to speak on any matter?
I have 15 more seconds.
Yes, but I think there's so, if you want to go, go ahead.
Rain's behind you.
If you don't mind, just so that, okay.
4-2 bill, I had the pleasure of living next to three houses that were college students that were owned by T.J. Malone as investments. He got the, of course, the increase for three people in there, and it was an utter nightmare. Those college boys were animals. I didn't even act that way in college. And they're now replaced by families. It's wonderful.
Thank you.
So that 4-2 stuff is ridiculous.
Thank you. Yes.
Brandon Records, president of the Salisbury Career Firefighters. Good evening. So most of my role is to be a voice and fight for people that are on the floor, on the street, doing the work. Probably more so than that, it's to be a voice and fight for people who physically can't be here anymore. Last Wednesday, the city held a street renaming for Captain Brian Lewis, who, for those who don't know, February 14th of last year, passed away from job-related cancer. Mind you, after he already beat cancer once and returned to full duty, nobody thought it was gonna happen. So I'll preface this in saying that we are grateful that the city offered to do what it did and followed through with it. I'll say, though, I think that there's a couple of shortcomings, and I'm hoping that we can kind of fix those. The one thing we noticed is that it's kind of obvious when we look at it, the lettering, it seems, the signs seem rushed. The lettering, the font is about what seems like half the size of all the other ceremonial renaming memorial signs throughout the city. And not only that, but his actual name and Captain Brian Lewis Way is actually crooked on the sign. I think it's an easy fix, like I said, but I would just like us to take the time, do the due diligence, because Brian deserves it. More so than that, the more pressing thing is that Mayor Taylor, it's my understanding that your office was the one who set the date and time for this event, but you were nowhere to be found, kind of. So we delayed the event anticipating that you might show up. Then we got news that double booking, whatever the case may be, you wouldn't be in attendance. So started, people gave, started giving their presentations, kind words about Brian, his career, his life. And then, out of nowhere, you made the choice to come down Railroad Avenue towards the intersection of Naylor and Brown Street, where the ceremony was being held at Station 2 Firehouse, and you chose to come to the stop sign, look at the ceremony, I know because I looked right at you in your city vehicle, roll through the stop sign, and proceed out to Route 13 and not stop by. Now, I will say that you could have done, come up with any excuse. You could have said that there was an alligator escaped from the zoo, and you were the only one to wrangle it. And you could have come, spoken, just showed your face. Nobody would have said another word, and you would have been a good man for it. But the consensus that I've gotten from my membership is that they have never felt so disgraced and disrespected by that act. So I'm asking on you tonight to publicly apologize to our membership, but more importantly, Brian and his family, who were in attendance and witnessed the same thing. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak at this time on any topic? Okay, see.
I was gonna, if I could, if you know. Clearly, I would not do that intentionally. I had a family emergency situation. I was trying to get there. I had talked to Andy, and Andy was gonna step in for me, which he did, and that's why I just kept on, I just thought I'd be a distraction. The ceremony was well under its way. I thought, you know what, you know, really, and to be honest, I never knew Brian, and obviously you guys did, and it's really a fireman's ceremony for you guys, and I just didn't want to be a disruption. That was the reason I just kept on going. I thought, you know what, that's why I handled it that way. So if you're looking for an apology, you absolutely have it, but that was not my intention. Obviously, I would not intentionally do something like that for, you know, particularly for some, you know, of that ilk. So that's all I said. So it's what happened, and honest to God, and like I said, Andy stood in, and I think he did a sufficient job, and like you said, I apologize.
That concludes the public conference portion of the agenda. I will call this meeting, this meeting is adjourned, and then I will introduce a brief recess before we start our work session, a brief 15-minute recess. I'll introduce a motion for recess.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you all for allowing us that brief recess. At this time, I do call our, the work session of the Salisbury City Council to order. Time is now 7:33 PM. We'll start with a resolution declaring Opportunity Street LOC eligible to receive enterprise zone benefits for property located at 200 Cypress Street in Salisbury, Maryland. We'll bring up our economic development manager, Mr. Eric Jarman, from the Arts, Business, and Culture Department. I think we have a few of these resolutions, so if we can discuss all of them, we appreciate it. Good evening, Mr. Jarman.
Derek Jarman, Economic Development Manager. Good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, so we do have, excuse me, we are discussing 200 Cypress Street, as well as 1610 Westwood Drive and 1630 Westwood Drive as well. So I can kind of summarize, because they all are going for the real property credit. So if you want, I could read each memo individually, or kind of summarize kind of the program a little bit, and then I do have Mr. Gillis and Mr. Ryan here, if you all have any additional questions.
If you wouldn't mind just explaining the enterprise zone benefits, and if there's any special, you know, details pertaining to each property, but just explain what the enterprise zone benefits are, and how that maybe relate to some of the programs that we have.
Certainly. So the program provides real property and state income tax credits for businesses located in Maryland Enterprise Zone in return for job creation and/or investments. In order for a business to qualify for the property tax credit, it must meet all state and local eligibility requirements. To be qualified, the business must satisfy one of two specific statutory requirements, which are the business must either make an investment in capital improvements and/or hire new employees. Wycomico County as a whole is one of 36 enterprise zones in 20 jurisdictions, and as I said, all three of our applicants today are applying for the real property credit, and I'll kind of go into a little more detail with that. So it's a 10-year tax credit against local real property taxes on a portion of real property expansion, renovation, or capital improvement. The amount of credit is 80% of the eligible assessment in which the first five taxable years, and the credit decreases by 10% annually. So obviously, you're going 70%, 60% for the subsequent five years after that.
That's a tax credit?
Yes.
And for how many years, 10 years?
Up to 10 years, yes.
Up to 10 years, and as long as they qualify each year for those, the same, I guess if they continue to qualify for what makes them?
Correct.
In the enterprise zone. Okay, so it's a tax credit?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you want to highlight anything with each of these specific businesses, or, sorry, properties?
With each specific property, I would probably call up Mr. Gillis for his property and Mr. Ryan as well, to kind of comment on the actual specifics of those.
Counsel, do you have any questions, or do you have any discussion points?
So, I do, if you don't mind.
Administration, do you have any comments on?
If you want to talk about any of the three, they came out here, so I think they'd love to talk about, in what capacity they're able to, about any of the specifics. So, Councilwoman Blake, have you had one that you want to talk about?
Well, I just want to make sure one of these properties is for the youth center. Is that correct? Is the youth center property? Is it 200?
Potential.
Slide for street.
Do you want to bring, because I'm not sure if you would be able to answer that question, so if you.
I was about to say.
Mr. Gillis, if you want to come up, and then Mr. Ryan, if you, because we may have some questions on the Westwood, so, oh, he's got, okay.
Oh, okay.
I'm more fluid, anyway.
If you all wouldn't mind, just in your name, for the record as well.
David Ryan, with Salisbury, Wycomico Economic Development.
Brad Gillis, Opportunity Street.
So Counsel, Vice.
So I just want to make sure that the public is aware that the property is well-deserving to get breaks and to be in this enterprise zone for this youth center that is coming to the west side of Salisbury.
I can speak to our application. We purchased a property in January of 2024. It was an absentee landlord. Quite honestly, it let the property go into disrepair. We made the business decision to reinvest in our community and saw an opportunity to make some substantial improvements to the property, and we've completed a brand-new roof to the property, continued to work with the tenants to make sure that they maintain their occupancy there, and we're excited about it, and just wanted to work with the city of Salisbury and state of Maryland and Wycomico County to reap the enterprise zone tax credit benefit.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Ryan, do you want to speak in part for the Westwood Commerce?
Sure, and let me preface this. I think Wycomico and Salisbury was the first certified enterprise zone back in 1982. I think it took effect in maybe '83, something like that. So it's been a positive program for a long period of time, and it's designed to really direct growth in particular areas. If you look at Northwood Industrial Park and Westwood, I think it's done that, as well as downtown. But in this case, it's Westwood, Derek referred to as Westwood Commerce Park. This is St. John Properties, and if you ride by Westwood off 50 today, you'll see a significant development. It's about 30 million reasons that they're investing in our community right now. They do it on a speculative basis, so I think it's indicative of the confidence that a developer really has in the market area in which we compete. So it's a significant investment. I don't think they're done within the city of Salisbury, throughout the city, but this is a start.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
Sure. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any other questions or comments or discussion?
And the other two properties are bringing jobs.
This is designed, these are, the industrial base is, I think there's significant opportunity there for a significant number of jobs. These are two 35,000-square-foot facilities, and there's an additional development happening now in Westwood and another one in Northwood. So as we mentioned during the budget session, it's roughly $75, $80 million or so under construction right now from an industrial sense.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Sure.
Seeing no other discussion, Counsel, do we have consensus to move forward with the application of resolution to declare the property at 200 Cypress Streets, 1610 Westwood Drive, and 1630 Westwood Drive as eligible to receive enterprise zone benefits?
Absolutely.
Yes, great. Thank you all. Look forward.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we will bring up our Director of Waterworks, Ms. Corey Cameron, to discuss a budget amendment to appropriate funds for water main infrastructure. Good evening.
Corey Cameron, Director of Waterworks. So we would like to, consideration through the council to budget ordinance to move funds from the FY '25 budget chemical account for the water plant into the Naylor Mill Water Main Project, which is a huge project that's coming up that's funded by MDE and is gonna run the water main down Naylor Mill Road. So at the intersection of Jersey and Naylor Mill, there's future development planned around that area. So our thought process is to go ahead and install a 16-inch gate valve, two Ts and two valve boxes right there during the construction. That way, we won't have to dig the road back up or do anything else like that, tap into the main at a later date. So MDE has agreed to allow in the city to install these valves. They just said we would have to pay for the valve and the valve boxes and the two Ts. So as long as we do that, MDE's, you know, okay with us including it in the project. So this is, we had some surplus funds in the water treatment plant chemical account of the $60,000, so we thought we'd move that into the Naylor Mill project.
Thank you, Ms. Cameron. What does this do to, I know we just, in the budget, it was just approved, we just, this project was on, if I'm not mistaken, the Naylor Mill, that's the bridge, actually. But we, before, we've done a lot of work with this particular project. How does this?
This is like the $4 million that we got the grant funding from. It's just because that was grant funding for an emergency need. This was not necessarily an eligible expenditure, so if we wanted to think about future growth, we had to take on that cost ourselves. So we thought, while we're doing the project, let's go ahead and, you know, forecast that what our needs are gonna be, so this is a great time to do it, so we'll have to come back later on.
Any other potential needs you can forecast in the future when it comes to this particular project, or?
Andy could probably answer that. He knows more about the development.
I think when there's, when we're running that much water line down a street, understanding that, you know, sewer should at some point follow closely after that, it gives us a real opportunity to consider expansion. It's one of our growth areas. We do have a project right there at the corner that we're considering right now, so it opens all types of possibilities. So I think this is a great strategy as we consider what our next steps are in our growth in that area.
Absolutely, especially when you think about, I'm sorry, Ms. Cameron, yes, please.
Well, I was gonna say, there's an industrial area at the other end, too, that seems to be expanded.
Yeah, and when you think about that community that's over there, you can connect that need from the Isabella West Main Street, this is your district, Councilwoman Jackson, that does not have access to city water, and they're on wells, and we're entering that timeline. So I think this is crucial for beginning to have that conversation. So, but thank you, I wanted to make sure we, because this area's been a discussion for the bridge repair, but also the water main, and we've done some work with this since I've been on council, so thank you for that. Counsel, any other questions or comments on this? Okay.
The only comment I would say is that, you know, thank you for letting us know and letting the public know, because this would be an example of educating the public of why we need an amendment to the budget. Because, you know, last time we met, they were asking about, of course, the 6% tax, why we need it, and then this is a very good point, so we're being anticipatory and giving people, you know, this is like really helpful news, and giving people an understanding of why we're adopting more money out of surplus to spend for this project. So I appreciate that personally. Thank you.
Given that, Counsel, do we have consensus to move this, move forward?
Yes.
Yes, great. Thank you, Ms. Cameron.
Thank you.
We'll bring up, I guess, Administration from the Police Department. We have Captain Drew here for an ordinance to accept funds from the Governor's Office of Crime Prevention, Youth and Victim Services.
Real quick, Colonel Drew.
Colonel, I'm sorry, yes, it's Captain, I did most.
Don't call me late to dinner.
Please, well, I wasn't going to call you your first name. Colonel, how are you, how are you, Colonel?
I'm doing just fine.
Yes.
So, we are asking for acceptance of BJAG grant fund for twenty thousand dollars. This was a white paper that we submitted that can, funds that became available towards the end of the fiscal year for the state of Maryland. The white paper identified the expansion of our current camera system project. We're looking at adding cameras now to the plaza. This has been a big area where we've been trying to add to for some time. We, as you know, we use our portable cameras trailer when we do have events. This would help to eliminate the need of it, that trailer in that area, and hopefully will pick up the majority of the plaza moving forward.
This is, and then this is just in addition, kind of relates, but we accepted about eighty thousand dollars in grant funding for, for the exterior of the garage as well for some camera.
Correct, so we just finished that project. We just submitted for our final two draws on that through the state of Maryland, so in speaking with the grant manager for the state of Maryland, we should be seeing that money very shortly. But yes, that project is up and running. This is expanding onto that. The hope, in speaking with Mr. Dickerson from the IT office, what we wanted to do was establish the central area and build out from that location for our camera system. So the downtown would be our first focal point, and then we begin to branch out into the various communities.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions or discussion?
No, you already answered where it's going.
We have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes, all right, thank you, Colonel. Thank you. And, Mr. Kettler, are you prepared to discuss a budget amendment to the FY twenty-six general fund budget?
Yes, so before you, it's budget amendment to increase funding for attorney fees, specifically more for our special counsel. With our reopening for salaries for the union and then some pending additional litigation that we are facing, we've had to spend a little bit more money than originally anticipated last year on special counsel. I don't think it's going to end up being the full amount that is budgeted, because we were able to avoid arbitration this year when I had to submit this. So I'm going to, in the first reading, give a more exact cost I think it's going to be. I think it'll come down off the sixty total that is there. But yes, it is costly when we are dealing with litigation, but then also special needs, specifically with union contracts and negotiations, so.
Absolutely, well, I'm glad that we were able to avoid arbitration, that was going to stick and possibly move forward with that, so thank you for that. Counsel, any other questions or discussion about that?
I do. And what, what's the additional fees for lawyer, the additional, are we paying, how much more are we paying for the lawsuits? Is that, is that what we're paying extra legal fees for?
As we discuss pending litigation, for example, CBMs, this past month was their highest bill we've ever received. Just a lot going on. And then we have a special counsel for one of the lawsuits, and then with the union is the bulk of it too. So the more we find ourselves actively in litigation or there's more projects going on, it's more costly.
So, to be clear, the, which portion of the, so the city attorney is the forty thousand that's listed?
Yeah, we, we actually moved, sorry.
I just wanted to delineate which ones are, like, you've got, you've got several lines here, you know, amended.
To rob Peter to the pay Paul, we moved some money out of the regular legal fee into special counsel earlier this year in a budget transfer, so to make sure CBM gets paid for the rest of the year, there's more money going back into that account. Essentially, we're replenishing that account, and then the rest is the special counsel. So collectively, the sixty was to cover more of the special counsel needs for this year, and then some additional costs for CBM.
So, our regular city attorney is listed as city attorney, and the special counsel is listed as other attorney?
That would be, anything else, correct, yep.
Just trying to clarify what the different breakdowns were as to what we were spending on what.
Yep, and again, I think that number's going to come down. Avoiding arbitration also, we did have to pay a little bit of arbitration fees because we were within that window, so that did have to get paid out. But going forward with actually having to litigate that and then prep for that, we were able to save significant money by us not, by being able to avoid that last week, and avoiding it X, you know, times three. We are potentially, when I put this together, looking at three arbitration cases, which could have been in excess of that sixty thousand dollars. So I think that number's going to come down. I don't want to give an exact amount, but that will be introduced as a lower number, and I'll send it out to you all in advance of the first reading.
So, yeah, so the city attorney, okay, so the city, what I'm trying to understand is the city attorney is paying for CBM, is that for, does that include the money that was racked up for the union stuff, or was that for just general?
Great question. So internally, we, we have the flexibility to be able to move money between those two accounts, and because we had to pay for arbitration, we had to move money from legal fee into that so that we were able to pay for the arbitration lawyer. So that money is going back into replenish where we're going to fall short in the legal counsel, but majority of the money is going to be going toward the special counsel line item.
Right, okay.
And I can give you, it's probably better if I just go ahead and give you kind of a summary of where we land with all those accounts in advance, so you know what we're looking at, but we will be short this year.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions or discussion? Okay, do we have consensus to move forward with this item?
Yes.
Yes, all right, thank you. This time, we will move to the public comment portion of the agenda on the above items. Again, those wishing to speak, please go to the podium, and if you wouldn't mind, just say your name, and if you are a state resident. Seeing none wishing to speak, we will move forward with Administration comments. Mr. Kettler, if you want to, coming on behalf of the Administration. If you have anything, sorry.
I mean, lots to say, right? I really appreciate Counsel's ability to adopt a budget. I think it was balanced. I appreciate the movement of the amendment today. It's going to significantly help out our office, but I also think help out the city overall as we look and tackle complex projects and assignments. Having that additional firepower in our office is going to be substantial. I know it's not easy to try to balance a budget. I'm glad that we were able to avoid any sort of property tax raises. I am concerned with the continued increases in costs of materials, the increases in wages, that stuff is not coming back. It's going to continue to escalate, so there's going to be a cost share that just exists. So I'm looking forward to our water and sewer conversation to help everybody understand where we stand. This is not going to be the last increase, and depending on where we land on a lot of these things is going to kind of really shape what our budgets look like in the, in the years to come. I would not be part of that conversation, but hopefully we've put some pieces in place to be able to think critically and creatively with our budgets moving forward. You know, I am concerned also, it was brought up, as we look at our unions, I love to take care of our employees and I like to safeguard that. I think we've done a really good job being able to protect the interests. I am nervous about a couple budgets back-to-back where we have landed on salary increases that I think have really stretched us. We did get lucky this year, we're getting an allocation from the county and the fire service agreement of an additional one-point-five million dollars from a back payment, but that is one-time funding, so that's something we're going to have to address later on. But we do need to figure out how to be, have smart growth, fiscally responsible with the money, be able to do nice things, but also just be smart with our money. This is my last budget, so I'm not going to be able to be there with, with all of you, maybe I'll stand over there. But, you know, all jokes aside, I really appreciate us having a fruitful conversation and being able to get a lot of things accomplished in, in the budget, and I'm looking forward to some of the extra things that we were able to add in and keep moving the city forward. That's really all I wanted to comment about tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Kettler. Move forward with any council comments? Yes, Councilwoman Jackson?
First of all, I'll come in with the soft blow right now. This weekend, lodges at Naylor Mill Road had a pipe burst, and they were without water for three, four days. I received numerous phone calls all through the week for other business that the city handles, but this one, I would like to give an acknowledgement to Corey Cameron, who came and didn't really have to come, but she did show up today. The city of Salisbury, utility workers and from Waterworks also showed up. Mayor Taylor, I spoke with him in reference to some things, in reference to this situation. The maintenance engineer, he never went home. He stayed there the whole time. He stayed from Friday till today. And that's remarkable, because you don't find many people who would be that worthy to even want to be there, to stay there. Most people want to be home with their families, but he took his job very seriously, and I respect that. I respect that to the utmost, and he needs to be, I don't know what they're going to do for him, but I'm going to try to do something for him, because he didn't have to do it, but he did. I myself went and picked up water along with some other people, but the water department and utilities hooked up to the fire hydrants and got water for the people to use for today. But as far as I know, the water is back on, the, I think Benjamin Franklin went to Alexandria, Virginia, and I'd like to thank them as well, they went to pick up the piece from Alexandria, Virginia, because if we'd have waited for the part, it would have been like a week or two weeks for them to get it, and then they would have been out of water. Now, mind you, the manager of that complex goes to a conference, and I was very upset about that, because that shouldn't have been the place he'd have gone, and he should have just said, I can't go to the conference, I have an emergency at my place, at my development, but that wasn't the choice he took. But I just want to thank all of those who were on time. It just, it was just like it flowed, it flowed. And I wish Corey hadn't have left, because I would really like to, you have to give people their flowers while they're living. And she did an excellent job with explaining everything and giving me information. Herbert Miles was another person who relayed the message and got, and then one of the guys in, I think, Waterworks Utilities, Utility George, thank him too, I like to thank him, I don't know their last names.
George Wilkerson.
Huh?
George Wilkerson, he's our plumbing inspector.
That is his last name. They did an excellent job of getting this job done, and I'm thankful, and I know the people at the lodges at Naylor Mill are thankful, because four days without water
It's tough.
is tough, and I do know that, not that I've been without water that long, but I can only imagine. My second thing is, the council coming together to have a work session on our spending. I had so many calls after that meeting Monday from people in my district that I didn't even think were really paying attention, but they paid attention. I was like, I was just, because we need to have a work session on spending money that is given to us or that is afforded to us by our constituents. We need to be a little bit more considerable about how we do this. Clothing is not one of the things that we need to be buying, because we can buy our own clothes, and that's how I feel, and no, no, not being disrespectful or anything, but I'm being, I'm being forthcoming. I can remember never having us do this but one time, just one time, one time, and it wasn't that we had the money to do it because we didn't go where we was, we didn't do what we were supposed to do, actually, and I'm going to say it, we were supposed to go to an MML, and it was COVID, we didn't get to go. So that money was sitting there, so we got the opportunity to get a few little shirts with the city on it, but to go to the extent of having your name embroidered and all that stuff, that's got to stop. It has to stop. We've got to be a little bit more careful how we do things, because our citizens are looking at us. They're really looking at us. And I honestly didn't think any of, I'm not going to say, I'm not going to try to say, I didn't think mine were paying that much attention to it, but they were, and they were asking me, is this taxpayer's dollars that's being spent like this? And we just got to be careful, and we need to have a work session on how we're going to spend our money, where we're going to put our money at, and how we're going to, we can't keep, we can't keep doing this, we just can't, and it's, and it's not right to the people who pay taxes. Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman Jackson?
One of our guests that was here tonight has gone, he had to leave, but it was an example, our delegate Barry Beecham was here tonight, and to me, that is a really nice, warm, fuzzy, when you see city council members, county council members, delegates that go to Annapolis, all supporting each other. And even though he has gone, publicly, I'd like to thank him for taking the time to come and see one of our meetings. So thank you, Delegate Beecham. Doverdale had their ribbon cutting, we had the best time, it was fun, we had such a good time. And evidently, there are pictures to prove that I actually did the rope climbing, but anyway, I will live to regret that probably, but I don't know. And to tag on to something Councilwoman Jackson mentioned, just to let you know, when you do have concerns, you as taxpayers in our public, in our districts, in any of, all of our districts, thank you for letting us know how you feel. We hope it doesn't fall on deaf ears. I too got quite a few calls about the expenditures, you know, afforded to council members, so please know that since Councilwoman Jackson has brought it up, I also had the same experience. We are listening, we will do our best to address your concerns, can't make any promises, but we'll do our best. One more, community input, is this Thursday night at the Fire Department from six to eight, and that's the last of the four that are being presented by the city to get input, to know where things you want to take place, things that you want to happen, as Dave Ryan says, far out in the future. We're looking at ten years, right, Dave? So, that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
I've got just a couple of, a couple of committee updates. The Green Team meeting was last week. They are continuing to monitor and take care of the Boundless Garden. There are going to be a lot of vegetables in these community gardens coming up, so please partake, please, please go check them out and help yourself. There are lots of goodies out there, get them before the bunny rabbits do. Although, although I've been reliably told that the Boundless Garden has a security cat that monitors, so they, apparently the bunnies and squirrels and all the critters seem to stay away from that area, but, but yeah, absolutely, please, 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 you know, take part in, in using these, these gardens, that's what they're there for. The other thing that they were, they were talking about doing was coming up with some swag to have at Third Friday and events, to give out things that are usable, that are, you know, energy efficient, or, or things that encourage reusable use, such as reusable bags and water bottles, so they're, they're trying to come up with ideas for, for what they can order that would be both promote the Green Team and promote, you know, being more environmentally friendly. The other thing is the PAC meeting, the Public Art Committee meeting. I'm really excited about what they're talking about, so they're going to be coming out with an RFP for a project here in the coming months for some accessible art, hopefully in the park, and we've got, we got a few hurdles to get over first that I'm working with staff on. I did a little demo as to how difficult it is, if you are disabled or you do use a mobility device, how difficult it is to get around the park and get access to things. So, you know, it, it would be great, they're talking about this art project being an accessible piece of art, public art, and it would be great if folks who need that accessibility will be able to access it, so they got to get to it first, so we're going to work on that. But yeah, that, that's what's come, what's been going on with the two committees in the past week that I've attended, and that's it for me.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gregory. Thank you, Councilwoman Gregory. Councilwoman President?
That's a lot, that's a lot. It's good everyone's got good reports, good things going on. The bike and pedestrian, by the way, they are regrouping after the, I guess, the collapse of the 12 million that, we still don't know where that's at, or if it's gonna be repurposed or given back, or if we can use it back into the, the initial purpose. We don't know, we don't know yet, correct? Is that still at that stage? And I think that's where the, the bike committee is. They don't, we don't know about the funding piece of it, so they haven't been able to...
We owe you an update, for sure.
Okay. So, we'll, we'll, we'll stay tuned. Okay, so, I think that's part of where the bike committee is. It's just they're waiting for this update to see. One of the things that they're trying to do is just redesign bike, bike pass, bike signage, and just, that's the only thing they have at this point, I think. So, that's kind of, they're kind of stuck in a place. The human rights committee is, they had developed a survey, they had, their last meeting last week, I believe, that they had finalized their survey. From what I understand, the human rights survey will be on the, the city's website to be put out for everybody to fill out and ask questions about human rights and human rights issues in the city of Salisbury. And I think there's like 12, 12 or 13 questions on there, maybe 15, 15 questions. I hadn't seen the finalized, from the draft to the finalized yet, but that is coming soon. So, that'll be interesting to see what people have to say and get people's feedback from that. I just want to reiterate, it's, you know, people make comments and then they, they leave, but I do want to follow up on a couple things. The city council people here, it's not just part-time. I think in the paperwork, it's part-time. This is not part-time work. There's a lot more than part-time, and people really do either go to events and just the reading material alone, if you actually read the packets, it's, that's, that's, that's quite a bit in itself. But then, as you can hear, that we're active and we're out doing other things, then plus coming to the meetings and answering phone calls, so on and so forth. The other thing about the council, and we have a further discussion about this, I think April and Sharon brought this up, about discussion about fun, spending money, but I do want to make it clear to everybody that the council has long had, since I've been on the council, there is, each council member has an allotment of money, and clothing is a, a piece of that. Usually, it's to go to regional meetings, or to MMLs, or to conferences, or to show up in, in public meetings to identify who you are as, from the city. And so, there is, there is, each one of us has an amount, and I don't know off the top of my head this year what the amount is, but it's for other things, too. It's also to pay for conferences and things like, for instance, someone brought up candy or something or other. Candy, especially chocolate, if you've not heard of the tariff yet, but anyway, in, in, in December, it was inflation, and chocolate particularly had gone up significantly, and our parade has grown. The amount of candy that's given out and the amount of that, I don't think would be fair to have any one particular council person pay, pay for that. So, it was a city event, it was city promoted. So, I, I, I don't know if, I think that maybe discussing how like whatever allotment we do get, gets spent, or what we spend it on, maybe, I don't know. But, I do know that there is apparel in the budget for us. And every council president has used that expenditure to get things done. And I, and even the city clerk, and clerk's office has a city apparel on. So, I think maybe a further discussion with that would be helpful, and that would be another thing to, like, educate the community about how those funds are about, what they're useful, how they're used, and how much or what the allotment's about. And since I've been here, since I've been on the council, and it's been, I guess, about seven and a half years now, every year, that line item has come, we've come under, we've come under on that, on the council's allotment. So, I just wanted to put that out there to just balance some information. The tax on the waters, last, if everyone could remember correctly, and I'm sure people have really good memories of how many questions and criticisms there were about the six percent, the 6% tax on the water and sewer were, the question since the budget had been to do an educational piece to the public, again, anticipatory, that this would be an area where people would be, have concerns, would know that their personal budgets were going up, and to give them education on exactly why it had to be going, going up. To say, like, Ms. Blake is bringing something up that's not even finalized yet, it's, the 6% has been introduced since April 15th, and this council had always supported it. It was one of the things in the budget, it's one of the items, it was going to be forward. The council had always said they would have supported it, but we always wanted to provide education and understanding behind it, knowing it was gonna be a hardship on our residents and our citizens, to explain that we weren't just blindly increasing the water and sewer. That's the important piece of the education, and getting that kind of information out ahead of time, and to help ease, or to at least get people to understand where we're coming from. Let's see. We did hear several issues about the 422. I have already been asking for, and I think it's coming forward soon, a copy of the ordinance. I also remember when that was put into place, had many concerns about it at that time, still concerns about it, and I'm looking up the documentation and the history of that, along with the clerk's office, who's been very helpful with that, too, in researching that, so we can get a better understanding of what we need to do as a council moving forward, and either fine-tune that, tweak it, delete it. I want to see exactly what it says, not to hear, "Well, this person says this, this person says that, this person says the other." I want to know exactly what it says and what it limits. So, I guess that's, that's, that's about a wrap.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Mm-hmm, you're more than welcome.
I'll start with, so, yes, we've gotten a couple concerns, and Councilwoman DeShiel actually brought it forth to have some discussion on housing, and so, that is proposed for the July 14th meeting, to have some discussions on some, some housing items, 422 being one of them, and I've already gotten some calls, which I've gotten some, some concerns and some feedback from citizens, but again, it's just for us to set the stage, for us to have the discussion. It's clearly, there's time for us to at least involve and, and begin to tailor that off of what's going on now. It's not our, we're not saying we're removing it, we, we will need to, it needs to evolve. And so, counsel, you all will get the current, I've already tasked our intern with looking at and getting the current legislation, so we have that ready. We have some, some proposed tweaks, but we'll send it to you all. You all be prepared for that, and then we'll hear from the public, and then we'll meet with administration, and that will all happen. But, July 14th, we're gonna talk about some ADUs, some accessible or auxiliary dwelling units, and potentially what Mr. Taylor has brought up about the mandate for some affordable properties. So, again, we want to have all that kind of a housing work session there. So, Councilwoman DeShiel, you'll be leading the front on that, so, so thank you for proposing that, but yeah, the work's being done on that, on, on getting that here. I had the pleasure of joining Councilwoman Gregory at the green team meeting as well, and they're gonna be doing some fantastic things. And so, one thing that we do have coming forward, which we're excited about, is, you know, we do have some littering concerns and some concerns there. So, we've got someone bring forward an adopted road program, and so, we'll work with administration and staff, and so, but finalizing that and just solidifying that, it's in the green team's hands now. They're looking at it, legals reviewing it, just to make it, you know, adopted road program to help with littering in, in our streets, because that has been a concern, so we'll make sure we're doing our part there. And then finally, I had the, I had the opportunity to attend and go to Glen Avenue's career day this, this week. And so, I wasn't feeling quite well, but I still, it's important, and, and I had a blast, absolute blast going to them, and, and them learning about city government. And so, they had a lot of questions, and, and I was able to, to, to help that, and hopefully, we, we have some future public servants there that will come from that school. But, always welcome that, always welcome promoting the city of Salisbury. And of course, we appreciate you all and your, your feedback, and look forward to seeing you all at our meeting next Monday, June 16th. And then, as a reminder, we were taking, we're gonna be at some conferences and just, you know, we have 4th of July, so beyond the June 16th date, we won't see you again until July 14th. So, we'll get a little break from, you know, from, from meeting, but then we'll come back in full force and be swinging there. So, I will see you next Monday at, at 6:00, but until then, this meeting is adjourned.